We've got quite a, well, we've got about five items for discussion, or four items for discussion, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. Item number one is department updates. Okay. Do that to their, their here. Yeah. Department updates. Can we do a department updates pretty quick, because we've got a presentation. Who we want to start with? Ken, go ahead.
Okay.
We got the road open. I heard tow red. I'm taking it for that.
Yeah, we got one lane of traffic open on Long Mountain Road, but we're still asking everyone to use caution because the work's gonna be ongoing. And we've got the traffic, they have the traffic signals in place on each side, but everything's going pretty smoothly up there right now.
Did you respray the, did you respray Phil Price Creek Road, Pratt Farm Road?
We're going to.
Okay.
We're going to. But we've got most of the dams repaired from the flooding that happened on April 18th and 19th. There was quite a bit of damage throughout the county. We had one road closure down on the Evans Road, and we got that repaired and the road opened back up. So we've almost completed all of that. We're also, all of our paving equipment's ready to go, and we're gonna start paving this month. And we're gonna start that on the Town Creek Trail off of Camp Road and get that one.
Okay.
And we've also got three roads ready for triple service treatment, which is Young Loop, Middle Springs Road South, and Martin Road. We're gonna be car and gravel and those roads here pretty quickly.
Okay.
All of our mowers are up and going. We did get the wooden bridge replaced, but we're on Harley Trail. We put in a pipe there and got that road opened up on March 22nd. And we're still working on some drainage issues on Hammrich Road. We're waiting on the phone company, waiting on wind strength to move an underground line.
How long have we been waiting on them?
It's been about two weeks. I've got a call into them. I called them yesterday, and they're supposed to let me know something.
How long do we need to give them before I dig out a drain?
They're supposed to let me know something.
I can't stop the world on him a phone line.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's about all we got.
All right. Ms. Dixon, ALC, everything clicking?
Everything's clicking as far as special projects. We got the latest letter saying about our $78,000 from GDOT on that safety project for striping that they've been authorized to turn to check with. I have another grant for the Airport Authority for $144,000. We have to go ahead and get some signatures and put that up for a bid contract. That's for windsock upgrade, the beacon relocation, and some of the west taxi.
Is the weather station gonna be able to stay where it's at?
I don't know. It says relocation. I don't know what it says.
Okay. All I got. Rodney?
Yes, sir. Stayin' busy. Got four rezone applications this month, five scheduled for next month, so it's starting to pick up at time of the year.
Anything from agriculture to rural residential, we're about to first.
It's a little bit of everything, yes, sir. Some of them wanting to go agricultural, I mean, the business, and some of them are wanting to go back to residential, so just cross the board.
All right. Sheriff Don, anything, Brian?
Nothing to report today to save time.
Animal shelter, Jerry?
We got $24, about 40 cats.
That's about it, 24 dogs and 40 cats. Anybody need a cat before you leave, please, see Jerry? That'd be fine. Who else we got? Who else we missing? Oh, Mr. Jones?
Recreation, we still got baseball going through this month. Hopefully, weather cooperate when we done before school's out. Along with the summer temperatures starting to pick up, the pool is scheduled to open up on Thursday, May the 30th.
When's the last day of school?
Be the Wednesday before that.
Okay, 29th.
Yeah. So by that point, the 30th, we'll have our summer camp staff ready to open the pool up. Summer camp will start the following week. We'll start summer camp on June the 3rd, and then we'll run summer camp pretty much until school starts in August. Lastly, if you haven't had a chance to come out there and take a look at it, Rotary has finished up with the next phase of Rotary Park by installing the concrete apron around the musical instruments, and it looks very nice.
Make it handicap accessible?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Thank you. Sloan, sorry, Parker, how's chief doing today?
All right, doing well, doing well, thank you. We're still working on getting some of the equipment for the engines. Hopefully, it's, most of it's the end. We're still waiting on some of the hoes to come in, and then we'll have the two new trucks up and running. They're doing the final grade out there on the Moss Station. It's going well. I've met with Brian Johnson, spoke with him, and everything's going well with it. The new animals, we're still waiting to, waiting on them to finalize that one remount, and then we'll send the other one out. And then just, obviously, we've got the biz back in for the tape station.
All right. Anything else? Family Water Department?
Not much really going on. We've just got a couple of projects. We finished the line relocation up on Jones Mountain. Got it on, got it, got the water on down to where the wash is at for the company to use. And we're about 65% done in Lawson's Landing. Once we get the main road crossings done and get the tying done, all we'll have to do is the services, and we'll be finished up in there, and then we'll be starting on, hopefully, Young Loop, probably midsummer or something like that.
Talking about backside of Young Loop, go back around into Henderson Mountain.
Yep.
The, I thought there was something else we just wanted to try to get done before we go?
We're talking about redoing the line on Children's Lane. We've had several leaks out through there in the past couple of months, and we're talking about disreplacing all that.
Has anybody, has anybody brought up on 136 to bring that line from 136 for an inch now, go through the bridge, the new bridge, and bring it up on the other side to get through those areas?
Not this year. They had, last year, we had a developer who was inquiring about it across the creek and all that property that's for sale. And we just told them they'd have to upgrade it and pay to have the line run across to that, and they didn't want to do that at that time, so we've had nobody inquire about it this year.
Anything going on around Five Points?
No. No, we go up to Five Points, and we stop, and we go out to Town Creek. So ain't nothing else, ain't nobody worried about nothing up in there.
Okay. All right. Don, good to see you. Chairman of the Airport Authority. How's, how's it going over there?
Flying.
Flying. Everything's taking off, isn't it?
Yes.
It's good to have you here. Thank you. Ms. Harvey, you got anything on the financial end of?
The only thing I have coming up this month is, I should get a draft of the audit and finalize that and be presented to the board at the June 20th meeting and filed with the state before June 30th.
Okay.
That's about it. Everything else is going okay.
All right. Paula, any resource?
One I might mention is the ASCG grant that Alton had been working on, the safety grant. He got that submitted on May the 3rd, and we'll see what happens with that.
All right. Y'all get any other questions for anyone here so far?
Just something I was curious about. Ken, most that, why the jump to Jones Mountain? Do we own there, or is that something that the company working on it owns? I was just curious.
You're talking about the red lights?
The red lights.
Oh, yeah. They're providing the red lights.
Okay.
They're providing all that, the traffic control, the engineering unit with it.
Thanks.
And do they ever give you an update now? Because they were looking, once they get that one lane repaired, where they can get traffic, I'm looking at what, another 50, 55 days to take to get the other lane finished?
Yeah. And that depends on, you know, whether.
Yeah.
That was the rest.
All right. And before we, before we move off to this section, we've got a couple of presentations we'd like to make at this time. Y'all bear with us a few seconds. We have got a couple of employees that have, and it's something we've been trying to push for some time. Mr. Cole Strickland, would you please come up? And Ms. Miranda April Lee Harrison. Let me get on the other side here. This is gonna recognize Pickens County Board of Commissioners, proudly recognize Mrs. Nicole Strickland for her dedicated service at the Pickens Animal Shelter and her commitment to professional development, May of 2019. The purpose of this is, now we have got two trained animal coordinators for Pickens County. So thank, so thank you very much, and we appreciate you doing that for us. Also, in the same, Ms. Miranda April Lee Harrison, for her dedicated service at the Pickens Animal Shelter, for her commitment to professional development. And again, we've got two now that we haven't had in quite a few years, the met criteria for law enforcement and for, hopefully, these cases that will go into the judge for the future for Pickens County and the animal shelter there. I want to thank y'all very much. And here's, here, Black. Thank you, Lord. So, pictures, we only do pictures?
Yes.
Come on, come on, kids.
Will we get Jerry in there with them?
This is the one Jerry shot, I guess. Jerry, please. Come on, Perry.
Yeah.
I'll let you get in. I want to watch it.
There you go.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you real very much.
Rob, before these ladies leave, on behalf of the Sheriff's Office, I just want to thank them for all the work that they do. I know we work very closely together, and we can't thank them enough for the work that they do and how well they work with us and our staffs.
And again, again, it's another one of them jobs that's a known situation, but we think of what to do for the animals, and they're kind of, I won't say controlless of work, but we, we actually adopt out a whole lot more than we put down. Thank God for that.
And I also have a transport that goes up north with a lot of our animals now, too.
That's correct. We appreciate it. Thank y'all. Now we come to gift court benefits on item number two. This has been a topic that we've been talking about for quite some time. I know for the last five years, the county commissioners here have revamped just about everything that has to do with retirement, with health insurance, and that for Pickens County, and it was way overdue. The next part of this, of course, of course, is the 80, 80 factor, the amount of years for retirement. And Ms. Harvey, you've got, well, we've got the gentleman gift court here. Both of us are here. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. There you go. And so we have both these here. Ms. Harvey has, has put together some numbers on this. Y'all, and y'all have been, been abreast of the situation that we're, that we're trying to pull off here. I'm gonna do something, and I don't want to take up much time, but I'm gonna kind of open it up, if y'all don't mind, for a few questions in regard to this, because there's, we've got, we've got a lot of employees here that are gonna be interested in this. And then when we get done with that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a recommendation. And so, to that point, Ms. Harvey, you've got anything you want to bring to the, to the table on this?
I just want to say, what the, what do you commissioners have is, it's not really the cost of the unreduced early retirement, that's the cost of the retiring medical for the employees that are grandfathered into that, and that's something that we have to take into consideration also. So these numbers are not the actual pension plan cost increase. That's on their end. They'll discuss that.
Okay.
This is the retiring medical.
Y'all have any, kind of hard to say bottom line numbers, because this is a kind of a moving target when we try to get into the numbers on this thing, because even though the, even though the gift court is looking at the 80 factor, if Pickens County does something that most other counties don't do, that when you get to a certain age and you want to retire early, we will furnish health insurance from that point on to age 65, I believe.
For employees that were grandfathered in before?
That's correct. So it's kind of coming down with all those numbers. These numbers here were rather, once we were able, and Fay was able to pull everything together with gift court, was able to pull this together.
What was that date, Fay?
I'm sorry?
What was the date, the grandfather date? Was it 2000?
2002, I believe. Alex, it's effective November 20th, the Pickens County Board of Commissioners voted to amend their retired medical insurance program that follows only employees hired before January 1st of 2002.
Okay.
Who met the, who met the below cri, below criteria will have the opportunity to participate in the retired medical insurance program. So that was back in 2002. And then it has, has morphed into what we've got now. The, of course, we got the package plan on that one, on that as it comes forward. Now, that being said, how do I proceed to this point? Do you want to bring out the cost, or do y'all want to give us a cost estimate of what we're looking at for the future from the gift court's perspective now? Granted, you're not gonna know all the insurance forms when it comes to health insurance. That's gonna be added and taxed on on top of that.
Sure.
So. I mean, I have the, I have the cost sheets here. If you want to copy, or do you want us to?
Yeah, we want a copy.
Yeah. Well, all of them want a copy, because we've got, I've got 911 that's gonna be eligible. We've got some firefighters, sheriff department. When you get to the, when you get to the 50, age 50 factor, it's gonna be quite a few, depending on how it's ruled out. Now, we already got, certainly got my. Oh, you ready that also? Now, this is still, for everybody's intent and purpose, this is still in discussion mode. We've not, we're not able to go over anything today. And we're gonna have to look at this very closely for the future. So, anyway, whichever, whichever you want.
Absolutely. So, coming out of the work session from about a month ago, we went back and we did a couple of things. One, we made sure we had your 2019 data. So that's what we used for the routes cost study. And then we looked at four different scenarios. We also applied the assumption changes that are, would be effective 1-1-19 from our actuary. So once every five years, we do a, what is called the experience study, where basically they go and test the assumptions that are used to calculate your contribution. So these numbers are the most current and accurate numbers that you can provide based on the scenarios that you presented to us.
Okay. Now, that's true, that's for right now.
That's for right now.
That gives any projected cost for the taxpayers for the future of these lands?
No, no. There is a possibility to do a five-year cost study. That will take some time, but we, we can do that. But this will give you a real good estimate based on your current plan, the current participants. I mean, it is a closed plan, so you don't have new participants going in, so it's not gonna move much. I mean, with us updating it and using the 1-1-19 numbers, we feel quite comfortable in the numbers that we give you.
All right.
And so there are four scenarios on there. You know, coming out of the work session, it's, we were directed, hey, let's look at all employees versus public safety only. So for each scenario, you've got a rule of 80 with the minimum age of 50, and then you've got the rule of 80 with a minimum age of 55. And so those are the four columns. And then you can look to see what your required contribution, so if you look at line six on the sheet and now work across, that's what your current required contribution is estimated to be prior to the change. So if you did no change at all, that's your estimate of what you're gonna owe this year. Line seven is your required contribution after the proposed challenge. So you see, to put a rule of, or a rule of 80 for the minimum age of 50 for all employees, that's gonna increase the cost about $173,000 a year going forward. And you can just work across that road. If you do public safety only, it lowers that to about $102,000. Then if you change it to where it's age 55, so the individuals would have to work at least five more years to get to that age. So if you think about it, that's five more years that they're putting into the plan, and it's five less years that they're drawing that unreduced benefit, so the cost for national would be less. For all employees, you're looking at $135,000 annually, and for public safety only, about $84,000 increase. And then below that, the same analysis, this is only recommended. So the required is the state mandated contribution that you're required because your governmental plan, and then the recommended just pays down that future liability quicker.
All right.
Do you have any questions? We'll be happy to answer those.
You pretty well covered.
Yeah, feel free.
And see, on top of this, we also, Pickens County also offers medical benefit, insurance benefits over. Above and beyond that, that actually, that actually adds to the cost of all this here. So all that works together. Anybody got any questions at this time? Because we've got a recommendation. And the recommendation is, y'all bear with me here. We're looking at, and I think this will be very appropriate, we've all kind of discussed it, a committee to study the increased cost of the unreduced early retirement option. Consider the project cost of retired medical insurance and the impact on future departmental And I'm gonna name five individuals that are gonna represent this. Number one is Ms. Becky Denny. Number two is Mitch Juergen, and I have talked to the sheriff. Number three is Alton Wallace. Four is Connie Turcot with the Financial Department. Five is Sloan Elrod, you're gonna be involved in this. And six is Alan Wigginton. That covers most of the department heads and the elected officials, sheriff department. This committee will meet as soon as possible and return a recommendation full to the board at the May 16th Commissioners' meeting. Now, once this board gets together and sits down and talk, if they need a little extra time, come back for that, it's up to them. But I think we've got, we've got a good five, five, six people here that can come to this conclusion. They need these numbers, and then they can work with Ms. Turcot and to get full of all the other numbers in place. Any, any questions to that? Ms. Denny? All right. You will have to get, as soon as the meeting's over, if, if these individuals will get with Ms. Denny, y'all come up and work out the times where y'all can get together. That'd be convenient for them, because we'd like to, as we have since the last five years, tried to, tried to bring Pickens County into the 21st century, for lack of a better term, for more retirement, for the benefits for the employees, try to get some of our older employees to, not that we want to push them out, they don't retire, but we do have to come to the point to where, to where some people need, need, need relief, need to go ahead and retire. Now, one thing you might want to look at, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong, I think this discussion comes up, once you retire on this program, you cannot come back, correct? You're not eligible to come back. So those are some, some of the items that y'all will have to concentrate on. I believe that's right with gift court, I believe, in it, on the retirement policy.
There, there is a IRS code, an IRS guideline about bona fide termination, wherein the common sense is, why would somebody retire and then come back to work? There's circumstances where there are options to that, but on a normal basis.
Yeah. Well, I just want the, the six individuals to understand that, and I think, I think Alton here pretty well cuts speed on that also, as we go forward with it. I know two weeks with what we've already put together on numbers should give you a pretty well basics on how, how we can do this, because the last thing we want to do is, is be a detriment to the taxpayers of Pickens County and cause their budget, or cause us to have to raise the mileage rate this year and the next, next two years down the road to help pay for this, even though we're trying to figure out a way to make this work for all the employees of Pickens County. So, that being said, any further discussion on this? Because I'm gonna go to item, item three. And I want to thank y'all for being here. And if you will, please, if this, this group needs to contact y'all, can y'all be available?
Absolutely.
All right. All right. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. I appreciate y'all being here. They might have some, anybody sitting here might have some questions for you when you get out in the hallway. Please, y'all do, and get with that. But I want to thank y'all very much for being here. Appreciate you being, more than just calling at the last minute to get this thing fully together. All right. No further discussion? I'm going on to item three. Free sale of tax sale lots. And I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Landrum, and I don't know if we got any tax people here or not, but.
Really, what, what it is, is to address the property that the county now owns through a tax sale. And we own those in two separate ways. One is Pickens County Georgia owns them, and several of those lots have been transferred to the land bank. And we have talked, we were held up to do anything with the cost of litigation, and litigation has long since concluded. And we have talked about setting up an auction, like an online auction, where people could put their bids in there at land development, and then they would approve those bids at the following Commissioners' meeting. And basically, the bid would start at whatever the bidding price was at the tax sale, which was the back taxes plus the cost of collections. It's, it's taking me a little longer than, than anticipated to get all of that set up for the, for it to work. There are some people that have been calling my office wanting to go ahead for various reasons to, to purchase some of the tax sale lots. And what I wanted to run by it was, if, if that's the model we're going to adopt, is to have that kind of a bid process, go ahead and allow somebody to bid and submit a bid for that same amount of money, that same calculation, even the back taxes, cost of collection, and just the highest bidder would be awarded, usually about the big one or the one, most of them.
Would this include the lots that are in both places, but the land bank?
Well, really, what would happen is the county would have to, you would have to transfer yours to the land bank, and it would be the land bank that would actually execute the sales. The website, on the county's website, would actually reference the land bank. So there would be a meeting of the land bank to actually approve that. You're basically giving them the guidance for them.
And that would include all of the dead tree, the canoe lots?
There's not that many big canoe lots, there are tremendous amount of dead tree lots. And then there are some, some other lots that people have lost. And I think those, the majority of them, including me, are the ones that, where they live and they got some for them. But if that's all right, we go, I mean, obviously, you can't go down if that's, if that's agreeable to you, I'm going ahead and start that.
Sounds, sounds like a great point.
What will that do to, say, the lots that are not in the Jasper Land Bank? You go ahead and move them into the Jasper Land Bank?
We need to, because you can't really sell it unless you do a public auction, and the way we're doing it on the website is not compliant with that, with that code section. You have to, we're basically just doing that as a way of soliciting, putting something automatic up there, so if somebody didn't want to buy a tax sale office, is how they can do it. Because the land bank does not need, they don't, they don't need monthly, they just kind of need whenever there's something they need to. So we collect some of these.
Okay. All right.
But yeah, to answer your question, we would transfer it all into the land bank, so that we wouldn't have any, any of the, the way the land bank is governed. They determine of their own, they can determine their own terms and conditions of the cycle. That's very, pretty much a principle which y'all said, too.
Sounds good.
All right. Any further questions on that? Because I guess you're gonna try to have something ready for us on the, on May 16th? Okay. All right. That brings us down to item number four, under economic development. I think, thank you, Mr. Boggs, for being here. I know this has been, been a topic that's been going on for some time. And Mr. Landrum, you wanna, you wanna talk on this?
Yes, sir, thank you. I've sent y'all the draft of a resolution between the county and the city of Jasper. And it does two things. One, it puts in motion some steps to have an economic developer hired, and then the second thing it does is addresses the desire of some to have a strategic plan developed. There's been a lot of, a lot of work, I've not participated, but there has been a lot of work along those lines that I'm aware of. As you know, when, when the last economic developer director was released, or left his position, the county...